This is the City of Brunswick zoning board meeting for December 18th, 2018. We're all ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Ron.
John Bogart.
Ross.
Edel Ascona.
Tom.
Charlotte McNair.
Doug Sheehan.
Here.
Peggy Chester. John Zimmerman.
Here.
Ivan Adorno.
Here.
Trace Pavaro.
Here.
Sue Magellagut.
Here.
John Fox.
Here.
Nancy Paul.
Paul, now saying all the comments made.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open and Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied in a notice case sufficient notice at the time placed in conduct of all public meetings of the Board of Adjustment, the City of New Brunswick, and by the city clerk placed on the appropriate open and board of the LAU City Hall, 78 Fire Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and transmitted to the official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick, and we the home news agreement to start with.
Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commanders of the board, September 25th, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the members have received conferences over minutes in the package for review unless you have any changes or motion to approve.
Motion approved.
All seven. All three. All opposed.
Communication report for the losing of memorialization. Saturday group, LLC, Z dash two zero one seven dash one three. Site plan variance application for construction and misuse building located at 93rd Street, block twenty, lot twelve thirteen fourteen point oh one sixteen and nineteen and twenty point oh one, Doug's district, C dash four.
Mr. Chairman, I received conference of the resolution for review unless you have any changes to make to the motion to approve available for the blue on this. Zimmerman, Adorno, Pavaro, like updated Fox.
I'll say.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ivan Adorno.
Yes.
Trace Pavaro.
Yes.
Sue Magellagut.
Yes.
John Fox.
Yes.
One two seven sixteen LLC, Z dash two zero one seven dash eleven, variance application for construction and additions to the existence in the coming block located at sixteen Crosser Street, block seven one, lot forty four point oh three, Doug's district, R dash five N.
Mr. Chairman, I received conference of the resolution unless you have any changes or motion to approve.
I'll say.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ivan Adorno.
Yes.
Trace Pavaro.
Yes.
Sue Magellagut. John Fox.
Yes.
New business.
Uh, see, that's two zero one seven dash one zero, site plan variance application for construction and misuse building located at three fifty four Seaman Street, block one eighty three, block twenty nine, Doug's district, C dash two B.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, professional staff, Attorney James Clark and the Attorney Mr. Clark and the builder for the applicant. This application is a big challenge because the property measures only twenty-five feet in width by one hundred feet in depth. For about the last six months, your staff has been encouraging the applicant to acquire additional land. In a few minutes, you're going to hear testimony from Mr. Garcia that despite multiple efforts, he was unable to convince either of the two abutting property owners to sell any land to them, actually they would have to sell their entire property. And it just didn't work out. The existing structure was seriously damaged by fire a little bit more than four years ago. Mr. Garcia acquired title to the property about fifteen months ago, and he has been working on his redevelopment since that time. The pictures which are in Mr. Bignell's December thirteenth, 2017 report, which I assume that you all have, those pictures are representative of the condition of the property today. As you will see, if you budge despite testimony at the moment, all right, you can tell the fire damage and you can tell the fact that the property is boarded up. Just to orient you, the lot is adjacent to the rear of a structure that fronts on French Street. So as a result, we are one lot in from that main thoroughfare. Once again, our side yard abuts the rear of a property that fronts on French Street. The proposed mixed-use development is one of the permitted uses in the C dash two B community commercial district in which this property is located. However, we do require a use of variance because under that zone scheme, all on the first floor is supposed to be commercial space. In this application, the front of the first floor is in fact proposed for commercial retail, but there is a one-bedroom handicapped accessible residential unit in the rear. There are two non-conforming conditions which we request to continue. Those are lot area, five thousand square feet required, and lot width, fifty feet. This property has exactly one half of those requirements. There are also several new variances which are also being requested, and understandably so when you have a lot that's only twenty-five feet wide. So we are requesting single and combined side yard setbacks, impervious coverage, and to keep everything in line with the other structures on the street, we're also requesting a front yard setback variance. Of course, with a twenty-five-foot wide lot, there's absolutely no potential for onsite parking, so the parking variance is being requested as well. Interestingly, the floor area ratio standard is compliant, and what I take away from that is that this property is not proposed to be overdeveloped. We reviewed Mr. Bignell's comments in his report, and we didn't comply with any of them. Part of the presentation tonight is going to include some comparisons to the previous approval you granted several years ago at one seventy-three French Street. That was a corner property with a width of thirty feet and depth of ninety-seven feet. You approved ten residential units on four floors. All of the variances that this applicant tonight is requesting were granted in that application. The lot area, the lot width, the setbacks, the impervious coverage. One seventy-three French Street had absolutely zero parking, and it also had a handicapped accessible parking in the rear. What we're asking you tonight is actually less relieved than what you granted at one seventy-three French Street. Our applicant here is only proposing three stories and five residential units, where at one seventy-three French Street, it was four floors and ten residential units. We have four witnesses tonight, the applicant, architect, engineer, and planner, but I promise you each one of them will be precise. Mr. Chairman, unless anybody has any initial questions, we'll call the first question.
Please call.
Mr. Francisco Garcia.
Can you read right-hand state names by your last name?
Francisco Garcia, G A R C I A.
And do you swear to this matter?
Mr. Garcia, are you the sole member of the limited liability company?
Yes.
And that limited liability company is Jane Abilik?
Yes.
And it owns this property?
Yes.
When did you purchase the property?
September twenty sixteen.
And have you been working towards redeveloping the property since that time?
Yes.
Have you seen the pictures of the property in Mr. Bignell's report?
Yes.
Are they representative of the condition of the property today?
Yes.
Okay. Is it correct that the property suffered substantial damage from a fire approximately four years ago?
Yes.
All right, and is the property boarded up today?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the redevelopment of the one seventy-three French Street property?
Yes.
I asked you to take a picture of that property, correct?
Yes.
Did you do so?
Yes.
I showed you this picture and asked you if that is the picture of one seventy-three French Street.
Correct.
I'll do some both in a second if I can. Did I also ask you to find an area view from Google Earth?
Yes.
And is that that photograph?
Yes.
And does that show the one seventy-three French Street property?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move the minutes A one and two, and I have multiple copies to the board. Maybe that's a step. Mr. Garcia, does the French Street property have a cantilever on one side?
Yes.
Is that visible on the Google Earth shot?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any onsite parking spaces in one seventy-three French Street?
No.
Okay. Have you seen Mr. Bignell's most recent review letter, dated December thirteenth, 2017?
Yes.
All right, in that he emphasizes that he would like to see you make efforts to buy additional property. Did you do that?
Yes.
Who did you contact?
The two abutting properties.
Would that be the one on the left? All right, that all right. All right, and did you also contact the owner of the property that fronts on French Street?
Yes.
Did you make one attempt or more than one attempt?
Multiple attempts.
Okay. What does the homeowner on the left tell you?
That they like the area and they're not willing to sell right now.
Okay. What about the business owner of twenty on French Street?
He was not interested.
Okay. Let's see if send this direct testimony is available to your questions.
Mr. Johnson. Focus for Larry Johnson. Right hand state names by your last name, please.
Jane Abilik.
And do you swear to this matter?
Yes.
Have you got any questions before any credentials change at all since last time we were here?
No.
I will take you to the next one.
Now, remembering. A three, please. And that is in response to one of Mr. Bignell's comments that he wanted you to have him polarize for any of the property. You've prepared that?
Yes, sir. Johnson? Okay. Can we mark it A three, please?
In line with one of Mr. Bignell's comments is the front facade brick.
Yes, we initially had another material on the upper portion, and he would like to have the entire front, not only brick, but also with three different facade areas, a base, a middle, and a top.
Okay, can you point out the base, the middle, and the top?
So what we did is very commercial on the front with the large window, the entrance to the residential, the sign, the camp, and the canopy facing below that is commercial or the middle, which is more residential in nature of all windows with shutters, and then the top with the windows with a crown top.
All right. Also prepare floor plans.
Yes, thank you.
Can you put those up, please?
Are they in the package?
Yes, sir.
No need to mark them. All right, let's start with the basement plan.
Okay, the basement plan has storage for the commercial area that's accessible for the user storage, and also has empty spaces for water meter room, gas meter room, and bathroom.
Okay. How about the first floor plan?
First floor plan. The first floor plan has. First floor plan has the commercial area in front with the glass windows that look out onto Seaman Street, and then the entrance to residential is on the left side, which your back to the street is on the right side. The entrance to the basement is from the inside of this door here for security. The handicap roll down the side alley and into a project that has one bedroom and living, dining, kitchen, handicap accessible, quarter fixtures, and kitchen area is all handicap accessible.
Let us move on to the second floor.
The second floor plan has two units, similar size, two bedrooms, the front and back, the integrity of the windows on the front and back, they're all windows. We have a living dining kitchen area which meets the housing requirement of more than three hundred and fifteen square feet. We have staff room, utilities, and kitchen in each unit.
Okay. Each is two bedrooms.
Each are two bedrooms.
That's correct.
Is the third floor designed the same as the surface?
They're exactly the same, except in that the third floor has a stair that goes to the roof, and it has a skylight which is an accessible skylight with a rail you can get on your roof to. The one air conditioning unit that is central air has a condenser on the roof.
Okay. That segues into, I think, your next exhibit, correct?
Yes.
Well, he's pulling that up. This next testimony is in response to Mr. Bignell's request that any rooftop purchases be screened.
It's pretty much.
Let's mark it first. If we're A four, four.
Is that the same as in the back?
Well, that is not the diagram in the package. The diagram is not in the package. The diagram is basically showing the unit on the roof in a proper location for code, and from the age of the parrot bit, in order to be able to see the unit in the center of the roof, you'd have to be at least a hundred and sixty-eight feet away, which is well beyond the other side of French Street.
You mark that A four, please. All right, have you had an opportunity to review Mr. Bignell's note three fifty-four?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, as a customary, here we go to the claim of your comments. These are parapet ten on page four. The first one that concerns an architectural issue would be item ten, that was in Frank. Could you address the comment there that you need to have windows for lighting air?
Well, I believe we do have windows for lighting air on all of the spaces. However, there is one wall that is so close to the property line here, there are one point six feet away, and it's been that way, and it's so it's still that way, so there's no windows on that side. But however, almost every townhouse that's built here in the city of New Brunswick only has windows front and back.
Okay. And we do run out of those on the other side, right?
And we do have windows along the side where we have more than three feet, five feet on the first floor and three feet above.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, item ten G says the front facade should be made of brick and the front facade should have a base, middle, and top, and we have testimony to that already. With regard to ten H, that's the request for a parapet to screen all rooftop equipment, and you have that testimony before you. Item ten I asks that the plan be removed from the architectural plan, and we would comply with that request. Similarly, we would comply with requests in items O and P that certain other elements be removed from the architectural elevation, and those items are on the engineering plan. It's just that staff didn't want them on the architectural plan. And item Q asks for color elevation, and we provide that tonight. That is Mr. Johnson's testimony, and he's available to your questions.
May I remember the board having a question? Do you just why you need a unit on the ground floor when the witness doesn't permit it?
I guess when it goes to the issue of, A, trying to provide handicap accessible living quarters for people, it's not always an easy function to accomplish, all right? We're fortunate that we have a piece of property that is relatively flat, and we've had the ability to design one. As I pointed out, one seventy-three French Street also has it, and it also falls in line with the city's longstanding policy that the way to develop the city is with mixed-use properties where we're bringing as many people right next to commercial and retail establishments as we can.
Well, can you find the, as a handicapped accessible unit, that's what the construction code provides, says the first level of residential units has to be handicapped accessible. So why, instead of putting a unit on the ground floor that's not permitted, isn't an elevator provided to make the second floor potentially a clear floor accessible? We have an application, once you're comparing projects, we have an application on later this evening with a similar number of units above commercial that does provide that kind of design.
Okay. I don't know what the lot width is of that other piece of property, when for us to put an elevator, I think with, A, because prohibited, and B, we just can't sacrifice the living space, and we've only got twenty-five feet of lot width to deal with. In terms of it being a variance, this zone permits residential units. It's just that it doesn't permit them on the first floor, frankly, I'm not sure what the policy objective was in designing the area.
Frankly, so we don't have units designed like this. I mean, this is access of an alleyway. You brought up one seventy-three French Street, which is a corner property where it's not accessed by walking up a narrow alleyway. We've had a lot of discussions about that at the TAC. Someone going into that unit, it's not a welcoming environment to, put a point on it?
Great, do you point a statement?
And it could be compliant with by putting in an elevator, and in comparing projects, we have one on later tonight, it does not.
Or all commercial space on the first floor.
Yeah, all commercial space on the first floor with an elevator.
Or all commercial space without an elevator and no handicap accessible.
UCC requires first level of residential space to be accessible. That's not a zoning thing, that's a.
No, if we eliminate the handicap unit, we don't have that issue. If we build all retail space on the first floor.
I'm not following what you're saying because.
I'm trying to eliminate the issue of the elevator.
If you're going to have residential units, the first level, the first residential level, whatever floor it's on, has to be accessible.
Then we have to stick with the application as we presented.
Others have provide elevators.
Once again, I don't know the width of their properties, and I don't know the layout, so I'd like to stick with the plan that we proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you three minutes to ask a question, Mr. Johnson. In the plan report, we had asked for the south side cantilever to be, could you just provide some testimony on why you're proposing that? Just so the board's aware, part of our thinking on that was the building on the south side is set back from that south side property line by five feet on the ground floor, but if you go up to the second floor, it's set back three feet, so there's a two-foot cantilever that hangs over you as you're walking on that five-foot side yard walkway to get to the rear of the building. Our concern was just that even in bad weather, someone walking down the middle of that walkway is literally going to get dripped on by the side of the building that they're walking underneath. In addition to that, we just thought aesthetically, having that cantilever of the building on the side sort of jut out there was not visually aesthetically pleasing. So our recommendation was to remove that cantilever and have the building and most other buildings in the district go straight up.
Are you going to address that?
Yes.
Basically, to give more living space on the second and third floor, the rooms to get to be very, very narrow, where only eighteen feet wide, and where less than nine foot wide on each bedroom, which is not, the housing doesn't like less than nine feet bedrooms. In order to get two bedrooms in eighteen feet plus a wall, we make the bedroom to be very small. That was the major, and we also have light sending sockets, so that it's not a dark alleyway to be further.
Well, Mr. Chairman, our recommendations was to remove that cantilever and have the building go. And again, if I'm sure you can understand, these are the issues with building on a five foot wide lot, you know, there's only so much, so much real estate out there, nowhere to go. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Johnson?
We move to Mr. Ron Sedowski, our engineer.
Right hand state names by your last name, please.
Ronald Sedowski, S A D S O W S K I.
And you swear to this matter?
I'm sorry?
You swear to this matter?
Absolutely.
Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Appeared before this board previously?
Yes, I have.
Have any credentials changed in any way, essential or less accepted?
No, they have not.
I would welcome up again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Prepare the engineering plans which accompany this application.
Yes, I have.
Tell the board, please, what exists on the property today.
Currently, there's a two-story, single-family residential home that is in disrepair, it's been damaged by a fire, there's an existing concrete patio and walkway on the property as well.
Okay. Does the existing foundation approach on the way to the lot?
Yes, it does.
Which lot?
It would be this bottom of here, I'm sorry, it would be number to the.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Which one?
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Thank you.
All right. Please indicate in some detail how the applicant proposes to redevelop the property.
Okay, I have a color rendering up here, which is the same drawing that's in the site plan package, but there's some text that's been removed from it for clarity.
A five, eight.
What I have before you now is a proposed three-story mixed-use building with commercial and one apartment on the first floor, and two apartment units on the second and third floor. The property has a landscape, planters in the front, represented by the green areas, a new street tree, landscaping, upper and backyard, four foot wide, I'm sorry, four foot tall, vinyl fence along the side yards, six foot tall vinyl fence along the rear yard, bike rack at the northwest corner of the building, and some trash recycling containers for the new use that is also screened by fence.
Utilities available to the side?
Utilities are available, and new utilities will be pulled off of the existing underground to service the needs.
Okay. Drainage, we had a number of discussions with the park, correct?
Yes, we have.
And have we resolved drainage issues?
Of what we're proposing is in accordance with the city standards, behind the building, below the recycling area and trash area will be an underground stone drywall. The roof leaders for the building will all tie in to the system. We have not, at this time, prepared or have taken soil tests in the area, but I have reviewed as suggested by Engineer Carley. I've reviewed the US soil maps, and the soil in the area is favorable for infiltration, and there's a somewhat low water table, so it's favorable for a drainage system.
Lighting?
Lighting, we have, as I mentioned before, we have a decorative light, a street light at the Seaman Street. We have some socket lighting underneath the overhang.
Which overhang is that?
The overhang over the access to the handicap accessible space, and in the rear, there'll also be a wall-mounted fixture to eliminate the rear yard.
How about that?
How about landscaping?
Landscaping, a street tree with a, a concrete surround, a well for the landscaping, then we have two planters up against the building that are proposed with boxwoods for planting in those locations, and then along the rear, we have a dense arborvitae type planting to screen the new recycling containers from the adjacent property.
You're planning out the recycling container here?
Yes, it's these small rectangles in front of the green landscape.
Are any trees required to be removed as part of this application?
No trees are to be removed.
Okay. How about signage?
Signage, the only signage on the property will be for the business, the businesses.
Okay, will it form at all respects in the city's ordinance?
Yes.
All right, are there any important spaces proposed outside?
No.
All right, have you had an opportunity to review Mr. Bignell's report dated December 13, 2017?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, once again, board members will start. Paragraph 10, A, we certainly realize it may be all unnecessary governmental approvals. How about 10J? How do we handle one of them?
The only will be through the front door of the roof.
Something similar to what happened to businesses along French Street?
That is correct.
With respect to item 10J, all utilities, are they to be installed underground?
Yes.
Okay. Item 10K, I think you've already pointed out where the recycling and the trash are going to be located, correct?
Yes.
All right. With regard to item 10L, Mr. Chairman, we certainly would be very fortunate to get your approval that you would agree that this property would not ever be used for any food handling, a restaurant, deli, grocery-type use, it eliminates the potential to try and locate children on the property later on, which just is not feasible considering the size of this property. How about item N, as in Mary?
Turn then, we will, we agree, we'll provide...
Okay, and N simply indicates and confirms that a floor area ratio variance is not required, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review Mr. Farley's most recent report?
Yes, I have.
Okay. There's several items left to be discussed, correct?
Yes.
All right. Is the first one, item 5.1?
Yes, concerning lighting.
And then how do you comply with that?
We will provide the required lighting intensities on.
And the other item, the side of 8.2?
8.2, that's correct.
And what is your testimony there?
That relates to the underground drywall, and we will, as a condition, provide a soil report to confirm the design of our drainage system.
I would ask Mr. Carley and Todd if there's anything in the reports that we have not addressed through the chair.
Our report, our fourth review, our fourth review report, Mr. Sedowski had a whittle away at those comments that had to do with plan revisions and supplementary, supplementary materials that we asked for. There are a number of administrative comments that if the board looks upon this application favorably, we'd look pretty to coordinate construction with the city engineers, to move in accordance with those parts of the city's ordinance that are applicable. And we certainly would do that.
Mr. Chairman, if, just for clarity on where residents and employees of the commercial space will park. There are no parking spaces provided on site. There aren't any, so it would be street parking.
Street parking. Mr. Chairman, we're gonna get into the issue of the target population for this project, and as you've heard me say many times for some of the other projects along the French Street corridor, the target population is very unlikely to have more vehicles. Any board member have any questions?
I have a question, I'm not sure if I'm answering the question right, but with this overhang for the alleyway that you access into that side of the front, is that gonna prevent snow from accumulating on that sidewalk?
There'll still be, you know, incidents where if you have winter and snow, it'll accumulate on the sidewalk.
So it's not fully...
It's not fully covered.
Any more? All right, we'll close with your doctor.
Thank you.
Can you bring your right hand, stadium, let's call your last name.
Yes, sir. Angelo J. Valletto, V-A-L-E-T-U-G-G-O.
Can you just put up a treat, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, I do.
Licensed professional planner, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir, I am.
Please, who testified before this board?
Yes, sir, I have.
Have you accepted?
I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, buddy, that's both engineer and, and planning?
Yes, his testimony will be primarily planning, but he might cross the line at engineer, so I follow planning on hold.
Well, still, sir.
Have you visited the site and surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, sir, as Lee is yesterday morning.
Are you familiar with the city's zone plan, its zoning ordinance, and its master plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's tackle the use variance first. What zone is this property located in?
We're in the C-2B Community Commercial District.
Is mixed-use permitted in that zone?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, then why do we need a use variance?
As already been discussed, the first floor is to be dedicated just or devoted to commercial use only. We're providing a small commercial use in the front portion of the first floor, ground floor, and a handicap accessible apartment, one bedroom at the rear on the ground floor.
How would you characterize this variance? How would you characterize the variance?
I would do it as a conditional use, because both commercial and the residential unit are permitted uses within the zone. The variance as already brought up by Mr. Patterson is the fact that we have a residential use on the ground floor.
Okay. Can the site handle a residential use at the rear of the first floor?
Yes, sir, in my opinion, it can, because we already heard and discussed, we're on a lot that's 25 by 100, we are not able to acquire any additional property, and we're not able to provide it with off-street parking, so that by having the handicap accessible apartment at the rear of the ground floor, we are reducing what would be ordinance requirement for off-street parking if it wasn't tied with commercial use.
Do you have an opinion whether or not the one-bedroom handicapped accessible apartment would be more or less intense than using that space for retailer-commercial purposes?
Certainly be less intense, as we indicated from a parking standpoint, and also based on the location of where the property is, the fact that we have a fairly, relatively small commercial use on the ground floor is more keeping with what is the development these days in terms of commercial use.
Do you have an opinion whether the property is particularly suitable to have a first-floor residential unit?
Yes, sir, in my opinion, it can, as we've indicated, both in terms of the reduction in the requirement for off-street parking and the ability to have a handicap accessible apartment without having an upper level, which, as you heard, would require a, an elevator, and with the cost that would be associated with an elevator, it would almost necessitate going up for another floor, which would create the variance for floor area ratio and just compound issues.
Is there also an argument that can be made that retail space is no longer as needed in today's economy?
Correct. As everyone is aware, these days, a lot of people are shopping through the internet, Amazon, fulfillment centers, warehouses, even Walmart now has a program, you can call them up, order it, just drive by and pick it up, so it's getting less and less needed to have the type of commercial uses that we all grew up utilizing.
Do you have an opinion whether the variance, this use variance, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
In my opinion, it could, because we are looking to develop it as a less intense use, as if it were to be totally used for permitted commercial use on the ground floor.
How about whether or not you can grant this use variance without any substantial impairment to the zone plan?
In my opinion, there would be no impairment, much less a substantial one. The intended ordinance having a mixed use of retail and retail is being followed.
You mean residential and retail?
Residential and retail, I apologize. Also, by creating the handicap accessible unit, we're providing for additional opportunity on the ground level, which isn't always the case for handicap or physically challenged individuals.
Can we make the enhanced standard of proof in this case?
In my opinion, we can reconcile these conditions, because of, as we indicated, the changing conditions with regard to large retail spaces no longer required in this area, and I think the size of the unit that we're proposing will fit in well, because we're within the shadows of French Street, which our residents can get out and walk and just accommodate all the needs that they would need to live in this area.
Let's deal with the existing conditions. Lot area and lot width are not conforming, correct?
They are, and as you heard from the applicant, we do not have the ability to acquire additional property so as to make it more conforming and to provide a reduction in that variance.
So the justification to continue those non-conformities is a hardship one, correct?
It's a hardship, and we're looking to be able to develop it to eliminate the building that has been dormant now for years, and which the applicant is seeking through his 16 months of working on how to, working with the city officials, to develop it in something that would benefit both parties.
All right, how about the new bulk variances that are being requested at the front and the side yard setbacks in the previous?
We are actually less than what's existing. The front yard now is 1.2, we're increasing it to five. The side yard now, it's generous to say zero, but we're over by about a foot and a half to two foot on both lots, 28 and 27, which are the two lots that front onto French Street.
When you say we're over, that means we're encroaching?
Encroaching.
You have a negative.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that we're at 1.42, decreasing what now is, by all rights, what we shouldn't have a building on someone else's property. And the total side yard, where now if we count it as zero, and it'll be a total of five, we're at six and a half feet. So that while variances, we are lessening what's in our present position.
Basis for the side yard setback variances in the front, the previous coverage?
The width of the property, and to be able to try to get something as close to conforming as possible for the zone.
So that's a hardship argument?
It is, sir.
Can you also make a flexible C2 argument for those variances?
In my opinion, we can.
How do we do that?
Well, anyone who took a look at the pictures, anybody who has visited sites knows that the property is really an eyesore, it's all, more enough as the type of, type of building that no one likes to have, because it can lead to more problems, and the fact that what we are gonna be looking to do, we're putting up a new building, it will be attached rentable for the city, and it will meet the needs of the local community by having additional rental housing, which the city is always in need of in the price range that we're proposing. It is also a type of thing where, at least the projects that I'm familiar with, when approved, constructed, are almost immediately occupied 100%.
Would another benefit be eliminating the imperviousment on to the neighbor's property?
Most definitely.
Okay. Do you see any detriments if these bulk variances are ran?
In my opinion, no, because what we're proposing is similar, as we heard of other developments, 173 French Street, 340, 346 Seaman, where there are also mixed-use projects within the area that are lacking in terms of supplying the amount of apartment that's required for their uses.
All right, so as part of the C2 analysis, you're supposed to do a weighing of the benefits and the detriment, correct?
That's correct.
How does that come out, in your opinion?
In my opinion, there would be no detriments because of the target that we're looking for. We're looking for individuals that are with a price range that can afford the apartment we're proposing, most likely would not have vehicles, they're just, I think it's 73, 75 feet away from French Street, we're once again there, they can pick and choose anything that their needs are, and there is, on a minor note, but still something that's beneficial, a bike rack that's being handled in the back, so that if they are the types that are athletic, then they can utilize the bike to get around the city.
That's the extent of his testimony, Mr. Chairman, he's available for questioning.
Any other board have a question, please? Anything else?
That completes the direct case after the public, I'd like an opportunity to sum up.
This time out of the building to public, anyone have any questions or comments, please come aboard.
Right hand stadium, player last name, please.
That's correct, okay, all right, we go with item.
Do you want to add anything, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I do. Leading members of the board, one question, it alluded to the price range, what is the expected range for these units?
Like, they're around 1,300 for two bedrooms, yes.
1,300 for two bedrooms, so 650 per bedroom, and the anticipation is that people who can afford that won't have cars?
Yes.
Okay, and if they do, they'll park along the street? Correct. Thank you.
Any other member of the public have any questions, comments? Same none? Board have any questions?
Yeah, on the trash, how will that be handled? Because the way I'm understanding it, it'll be fresh cans in the back, not bins, right?
Uh, there will be bins, yes.
Docks?
Oh, no, yes, yes. There'll be a ground six cans.
And who will be in charge of making sure that it's clean?
Um, I'll find a manager for the building, he'll be in charge of trash.
Okay, so he'll bring that front of the city?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just one more, and coming back to that entrance into that rear apartment, one of the concerns, maybe not a question, but is there any plan in place, if you're not fully covering that access to that rear apartment, that it will be kept clear? Because I'm just thinking of someone who's headed by their wheelchair, trying to navigate if there's snow and ice on it.
Yeah, well, there's lighting above the cantilever, so it'll be well lit.
No, I'm talking about snow and ice.
Oh, the manager, you know, he's got it.
They, they'd be in charge of this journey.
We called the out of the portion of the, yeah, we called it out of the...
Just gonna call Mr. McGee, so a question, pretend that the building manager is going to, is there gonna be a manager on site, or is this somebody you have or on the property?
Yeah, I'm the manager from the other property.
And just for the record, you know, various entities of the Garcia family own a number of properties on French Street, and as we've said before, this is only one lot off the French Street corridor.
One question, Jim. On that side cantilever that they have a problem with the setback regarding bad weather, would there be hospitality for the warning somewhere in that design, so that if people do walk on it, they won't get dripped on by snow or rain or anything like that?
Give me one second. The answer is yes, we'd be happy to do it. We've been struggling to, you know, how to address the issue that you raised, but I do have to point out, okay, it's against my interest, but, you know, once again, it would require additional side yard setback variance, but once again, I think the benefits of it, the safety, okay, would outweigh any detriment. So, yeah, if we can't do a canopy, we will explore whatever other means we can with the staff to make it a safer situation.
Man, we opened the public comment and then closed it by asking twice, until we all stand up before we close the public portion, we can't have... all stand up before we close the public portion, we can't have the staff.
But there was just more testimony.
They were just answering questions about what was said, and why didn't we more testimony? It was just clarification.
Just don't see the harm in letting neighbors speak.
Well, we gave them the opportunity.
And we raised the hand.
I hope they're out of questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'd like to close in a moment. Is it a rarity that Mr. Patterson and I don't see eye to eye, and he's granted us all mine? I said at the outset, it's a challenge to deal with the property, it's only 25 feet And I think you as a board recognize that, when you granted all those variances that you granted for 173, French Street, it's the only way we're going to develop single individual properties like this. Is this a perfect application? No, it's not, okay? The handicap accessible unit on the first floor, I just think is a win-win. That's what we want, okay? And I would dare say that we don't have enough of those types of handicap accessible units in any city, any town, any township or borough. We're trying to do whatever we can to make the accessibility work. I mean, we've been through four TAC days, and we have, you know, plugged away at this to try and make it as good an application as we could. And we will continue our efforts to try and provide a safer environment when we have foul weather. And if it's not in terms of canopy, I don't know if we can redirect the water in some way, but we'll look at any number of different possible solutions. I don't see any impairment to the zone plan. Everybody knows that this particular zone is always intended for mixed use. It's just that it wasn't on the first floor, and frankly, I don't know what the policy idea was to prohibit it on the first floor, if it was to create as much retail space as we could get. We're in different times, and you've heard that testimony, and you all know how many times you buy things on the internet, all right? And you don't have all the applications for huge warehouses and fulfillment centers like we have at the scallery, some of the other towns where I make applications. But it's just a different world out there, and we just don't need all that retail space. We need enough retail space to provide some of the basic needs that population that walks through that area. And we feel that although it's not a perfect application, it does deserve your possible approval. Thank you.
When we were talking about, could we make that a condition to approve it? Would we have to have more testimony to the fact it's going to be another variance?
Well, normally, like in awning, you know, yeah, if they put an awning on the front of this building, that would approach out into the public right of way, that's not a variance. We allow for that. Awnings would be normally kind of treated as a temporary, but not part of the structure.
So the answer is we'd not need additional variance relief?
It depends on what kind of awning or structure you're proposing. I mean, if it's sort of a canvas awning or something like that, that's something typically we don't do. If it's a structural, put it this way, if you have to go to build from and get a building from it, or because it's a joint construction, that might be a little different.
I think we'd go with the canvas. I mean, we're already, of the five feet, we've already got the overhang, so the canvas would only have to be two or three feet. And I think we can survive with that. Maybe we got heavy snow once in a while, we'll have to replace it, but I think that's the better all part of it.
Chairman, if the board was to look favorably on the applications, I understand that there's currently a setback variance that they're requesting in side yard, where it's proposed with a canopy, or is, if I'm not mistaken, at 1.4 feet? Is that correct?
That sounds right. No?
No.
No?
Not on that side. On that side, we have five feet and we have three feet, two foot one. So we're compliant on the side of the overhang, is this the other side where we have the 1.6?
With the addition of a cantilever, would that create a variance situation for that one side?
No.
I'm sorry, with the addition of an additional overhanging canopy?
If it's canvas, I think.
If it's nonstructural, then it should not.
If I may suggest, Mr. Chairman, if the board is inclined to defer to the tact and determine the best overhang perhaps, I mean, there is language indicating that if there's any additional variances that the board is requesting to have notice, the public come at this apartment?
Yes, we did.
So the board would have jurisdiction to grant a variance that would otherwise not be noticed specifically. It is in this case, notice that there is a side yard setback for one side and both sides, but if there's a second variance situation, creating a second side for setback by virtue of the board determining that perhaps having something in addition to cover, the board can certainly grant that. You can also defer to the professional staff to determine the best sort of cover within conjunction with the applicant.
I just wanted to just couple things that, you know, Mr. Clark, was saying, usually regarding a lot of the variance and so forth, but, I mean, the purpose that the ordinance has for the no ground floor units, considering for a property like this, so that you're coming to your home, you're not going up an alley, going around the back to try to get to it. I don't know if you're familiar, in New York City recently, they had a big issue about, they call door doors, that when they build low-income units in some of the more expensive stuff, like on the Upper West Side, the low-modern income people had to go through one door, the rich tenants went through another door, and I'm kind of upset with that. This is not a low-modern income thing on this particular project, but I said, you know, you're not walking up an alley, going around the back door to try to get out against what the zoning was trying to do. There may be some other occasions where it might be more appropriate to do that, talking about the 173 French Street project, that's on a corner, so you don't have to go around the alley, it's on the side of the building and so forth. And I also just want to point out that what the board has done in other cases has no precedent for this case. It has, this case has to stand on its own, so you don't have to feel that, well, we did it in the other one. I mean, they can bring that up and show that, you know, it is done, that's fair to do, but I don't want the board to feel that you're obligated to close, you know, two years ago, three years ago, yes, you were a project with a ground floor unit.
And I would agree with that, and the purpose of bringing that 173 French Street case up was just to demonstrate that in the past, this board realized that in order to redevelop some of these smaller properties, a tremendous amount of variance relief has to be raised. Yes, every case stands on its own merits. And by the way, it's 40 feet from the street down to the door of that residential apartment on the first floor, I thought you'd need to know that.
Do you actually believe being green that we should keep the half the overhang of the canopy on side and just leave it for the TAC and the proper? Cover one of the overhang of the property?
Chairman, the board's excited positive recognition, just following conditions, applies to terms of the DNR engineering report dated December 18th, 2017, submission of all necessary use and use and under cross-access agreements for DNR approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same, payment of site performance bond, amount to review and improve by the city engineer, submission of site inspection SVO, positive for engineering inspection fees, amount to be calculated for simple title 1624160, payment of all sewer pension fees, simple title 1304 and 1308, issuance of road opening permit from the city engineer if required, applies to terms of the Big Bell Consulting Report dated December 13th, 2017, planning review, Estor funded anticipated post-perform reviews, payment of fees due to city and funds related to the development and use of the project, payment of all standing taxes for sewer fees, we also have a planning board approval waiver, pre-occupy conservation district approval or waiver, any other outside agency approval that may be required for the project, cement engineering site plan, applying any changes required by planning engineering MOs or plan M's offered at the year, utilities and other site improvements maintained by the applicant for sole expense, all onsite utilities being started underground, all temporary enclosures in the public right of way shall require city council approval, all construction staging shall be done onsite unless an enclosure allowed, same with the public right of way approved by city council, streets are to be kept clean of sediment, debris, the applicant's whole streets to be cleaned and directed to do so by the director of public works, track patch to be installed, end of all construction accidents, replacement of damaged streets, current side walls as to the direction of the city engineer, and special conditions of there to be no food-related businesses, I'm not characterizing that.
Correct.
No food-related businesses in the retail space, and a awning variance of the, in any approval, or the alleyway, the final design, subject to review by the professional staff.
Yes.
Doug Sheen?
Yes.
John Zerman?
Yes.
Ivan Adorna?
Yes.
Trace Barrow?
Yes.
Sima Gelliket?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The next up, application will be given out to Tverdov, ZF 0173, wants a variance application, construction provision, and renovation of a property located 136th Street, lot 50, lot 12, building district hard ass, five days.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Peter Williams, 3000 Hattie Road, at Pinefield, Georgia, and I represent the applicant. This evening, I will be calling the three witnesses, including the applicant, architect, and also an engineer, planner, to present testimony. This is an application to make a minor addition to existing dwelling, a two-family dwelling located up the corner of Hamilton and Hardinburg. There is also going to be the construction of two additional onsite parking spaces. There are a couple bulk variances that are associated in conjunction with this application, which are fairly minor in nature, and there's an FAR variance in conjunction with this application. My planner will go over those variances with you and present testimony with the court of the variance. The first witness that I would like to call this evening is Mr. Tverdov.
Could you raise your right hand, state games by what, thank you, please? Peter Tverdov, nice to meet you, TV, DR, DOA. Do you support the truth of this matter?
Mr. Tverdov, where do you reside?
I currently reside at 31 Dix Street.
And with whom do you reside at that property?
Wife and one-year-old daughter.
Okay. And when did you move to that property?
About a year ago.
Okay, and you own that property?
Right.
Okay. And you own other properties in the city of New Brunswick?
I do, so we, so I played football at Rutgers, graduated from Rutgers, and my wife down here, she's a gymnast, she graduated from Rutgers, hopefully 17 years, my daughter goes Rutgers. So we met down here, a few years after we graduated, we moved back down on Hamilton Street, and we lived there for a little over two years, and we moved on the corner of Dix Street. In addition to that, we also bought property, another property on Hamilton Street, which is the one we're talking about today, and we bought a property on Hill Street as well.
Okay, just go very briefly, the property that you own on Hamilton Street, what's the address, not the one that's a subject of this application?
245 Hamilton Street.
Okay, and is that a two-family, three-family house?
It's a three-family house.
Okay, and when did you buy that?
2014.
Okay, and what was the condition of that property when you purchased?
To sum it up, when I showed it to my wife and I told her we were going to live in there, she cried on the way home. So it was not in good shape.
And after acquiring the property, what did you do to the property?
Everything, we redid all the kitchens, all the flooring, the lights outside to make it brighter, safer, we upgraded windows, we upgraded bathrooms, and just completely rehabbed the property.
Okay, and currently, you rent that out to primary students?
Yes.
Okay. The Gildan property, what's the address of that property?
41 Gildan Street.
And when did you buy that property?
2016.
And what was the condition of that property when you purchased it?
Roof that was leaking, holes in the wall beside humans. This is another property that was in very rough shape.
And after acquiring the property, what did you do to that property?
New roof, new electric, new plumbing, two new kitchens, painted it, cleaned up the landscaping, placed billboards in the basement.
And have you had any issues or any violations with either of those two properties?
No.
The property that's a subject of this application, when did you buy it?
2017.
Okay, and before buying the property, did you have any other interaction with the property?
Yes, so I managed the property for the owner from the end of 2015 to when I purchased it.
Okay, and that property has two apartments?
Correct.
And the first floor apartment, how many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms.
And the second floor apartment, how many bedrooms?
Two.
The number of tenants they currently have in those apartments?
So the first floor is currently rented to six occupants, and the second floor is currently rented to four.
And what are the maximum allowable number of occupants that you can have in that apartment?
For the whole property, 14.
Okay. Now, since you purchased the property, have you already started to make improvements to that property?
Yes, so I redid the porch, stained it, put in a porch swing, which is very unique as a runsway, installing central air, redoing the kitchen, and that's it so far.
And this application is to further, basically redo the interior of the building and allow for more bedrooms?
Correct, and it's a further update and modernize the unit.
All right, can you precommunicate what your game plan is, should the board grant the approval of your safety?
Yes, so in addition to central air and the porch and the kitchen, I'm updating another kitchen, I'm proposing to install an in-unit washer dryer, so each apartment would have their own washer dryer. I would also redo floors, add parking, and also, myself, when I was in school, I liked to use a bicycle, and I have tenants there that use bikes, so I am proposing to add bike storage as well via shed at the base of the drive-by.
And part of the addition of the bedrooms would result in you being allowed to have additional occupants within the building?
A total of one additional legal occupant, yes.
Okay, so you would be going from 14 allowable occupants to 15 if the board were to grant this approval?
That's correct.
Okay. Your history with these buildings, do most of your tenants have cars?
I'd say about 50% do.
Okay, and do other tenants have bicycles?
Yes.
Okay, and are they actively being used to get to and from campus?
Yes.
How far is this property from the campus?
It's probably a 60-second walk to the yard, it's gone a while, you can see the yard from their front, it's very close.
Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness.
Um, when you were discussing the maximum occupancy, how did you get that number? It's based on the bedroom size, I would say existing, it's eleven occupants, except for the...
Eleven existing?
Yeah, based on the bedroom size on the plans that we submitted.
The legal, see I have the CO, considering it runs out to fourteen, so it's nine on the first floor and five on the second floor.
That does mean correspond to the bedroom size, you need to, for evidence of twenty-one people, you need to get them through, when you add them up, basically, I just did the equals fourteen, so I just didn't know how that...
We can give you clarification of the numbers, we do have, as Mr. Tverdov said, certification from the city of New York.
Okay, I just was...
Yeah.
Survive this, it's a great...
We'll get that to you. My next, I'm sorry.
I do, are there bedrooms right now in the basement?
No, right now in the basement is a finished full bathroom.
Okay, so you don't have any two bedrooms?
Well, I'm sorry, there's also a laundry room down there as well.
And then, this is my lack of knowledge, egress window well, what does that mean? Is this, I mean, egress is a way to get out, but is it a window well, or is it a stairway?
The architectural deal.
Anyone else have a question? Next witness, please.
Mr. Duran, did that segue?
Can you raise your right hand, state your names, by word, thank you please.
William Norah, D O R A N.
Do you speak English better?
Yes.
Mr. Doran, what is your occupation?
I'm a registered architect here in New Jersey, been here, registered for thirty years now. I haven't been in front of, in bit, I've not been in front of your board, but I've been in many other municipalities.
I would offer the testimony, Mr. Doran, as a licensed architect, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Doran, you have an exhibit or actually two of these that you intend to rely on, is that correct?
Uh...
Or can you do all?
Yes, just the one.
Okay, can we mark that A1, please?
Is that the same as with five and planes?
Yes.
You don't need to mark it, the rest of them.
Okay, Mr. Doran, can you first of all tell the board, describe to the board, what the existing conditions are in that house, what's the layout of it, and how does it function?
Sure, well, on the basement level, the basement is unfinished, except for one bathroom, there is a laundry area there that is unfinished, and there's a stairwell that connects the first-floor unit with the basement, down to that bathroom and laundry room. On the first floor, there are entrances on both the front and rear on the first floor, there is a one, two, three bedrooms, a living room, and a kitchen. And then, on the second floor, there are two bedrooms, as exists, there are two bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room, bathroom, and laundry room.
Okay. Now, with respect to the proposal for the renovation of the house, can you indicate to the board what we are doing?
Yes, the, in the basement, we're proposing to finish the basement totally, we're going into two bedrooms down there, the utility, there's a utility area with furnace and water heater, furnaces, two furnaces, two water heaters, they'll be enclosed. The bedrooms will each have an egress window that will allow for, will allow us to meet the building code for egress from the bedrooms. What that means is that the windows will be larger than a regular basement window, there's a certain minimum sill height that we have to meet, so that you can get out of the window into a little well, and then that tears up out to grade. That's the first improvement, the, on the building. The second improvement on the building is that on the rear of the building, there is a, a, it's just about eight-foot, one-story structure, and we are going to add a second floor to that, that's going to cantilever out the rear of the property, two feet from that rear wall, so it'll actually be ten feet addition. And in that addition, we're proposing to get additional living space and another bedroom.
Okay, so the first floor of the structure is not going to change, the first living floor?
That's correct.
Okay, that will remain as is today. The basement where you're creating the two bedrooms will be part of the first-floor apartment, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and in addition to the secondary method of egress, as is required by code, the bedrooms will have sufficient height, they meet all of the code requirements, you've measured everything down there?
Yes.
And they will be fully compliant bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay, now, when we get up to the second floor, we're proposing the addition, explain the configuration of the second floor, we right now have how many bedrooms?
We have two bedrooms into the front, in the front of the building, and a kitchen and living room, bathroom, laundry room, and then a third bedroom with additional living space in the rear of that unit.
Okay, and that's going to be to the back of the house, not visible from Hamilton Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how much of, how much square footage are we adding to the structure?
Roughly two hundred and fifty square feet, just about.
Okay, and we'll get into, but that will create a variance because of that addition, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then our planner will deal with that variance. So as a result of that addition, a variance will be created, it is not a variance on the ground floor, so we're not increasing the footprint of the building, we're just adding the second floor to a section of the building that doesn't have a second floor.
It is only one story right now.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions. Oh, I'm sorry, the materials that you're going to use for the addition?
So the, on the exterior, there is siding, and we're going to continue that siding on the walls, the windows will be the same character as the windows that are on the building now, the roof will be very similar in asphalt shingles to match what's there.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Yeah, I'm just sort of the plan, so you only have one bathroom for the second and first-floor occupants, with six bedrooms and one bathroom for the use on the second floor? The bottom floor, the, basically you have one bathroom for those two bedrooms, it seems like you have one bathroom with six bedrooms on the first and second floor, do you have a bathroom on the first floor?
You know what, sensitive plans were made, we, the owner has decided to put another bed, bathroom down in the basement, so there'll be two...
Well, in the basement, I know, yeah.
There'll be another one down there.
Two down there.
There'll be two-fold in the basement.
Two-fold in the basement, okay.
Second one?
Can you agree with the right hand, state your names, by word, thank you please? Ingrub, I N G R A N. Do you speak English better?
I do.
Mr. Ingrub, by the way, I think our fourth witness fell asleep. Mr. Ingrub, what is your occupation?
A licensed engineer and planner.
Okay, and have you testified in the city of New Brunswick previously?
Yes, before the board, yes.
Okay, just very briefly, can you give the board the benefit of your educational professional background?
Sure, degree from Rutgers, in civil engineering, I've been licensed for at least the last eight years for engineering, and last six years as a planner.
Okay, I would offer the testimony of Mr. Duran, both as an engineer and planner.
Thank you.
Mr. Ingrub, can you please, first of all, describe the subject property and the existing conditions on the subject property?
Sure.
So, basically, this is a copy of the variance plan that we submitted to the board, just to provide a little bit of highlighting to point out the main features. The blue is the existing property line, the green is the limits of the existing structure. So we have the existing two-story frame home, we have a driveway which is mostly contained in our property, but as you notice, it's located all the way to the back of the site, which doesn't really lend itself to ease of use. The proposal would be to remove this driveway, construct a new driveway closer to the structure, which would be eighteen feet in width, wide enough for two vehicles. At the end of that driveway, we would install a seventy-square-foot storage shed, which would be for bike storage. And then, as was noted by the architect, we have a cantilever addition off the building, so really no more footprint added to the building, just that approximately two-foot overhang off the back of the existing structure. So those are the primary changes to the property. There is a hedge row that's located within the city's right-of-way, which we're proposing to remove the majority of, because even for the current driveway, it really does limit the ability to see backing up onto the street. It's not on our property, it really does influence the sightlines, so our proposal is to remove that, to improve that condition. Generally, a very well-kept property, and in comparison to the other lots surrounding it within the block, it's one of the larger properties, which has a lot less impermeas than most of the other properties.
When we remove the existing driveway, we are eliminating an approach on adjoining properties, is that correct?
We are, yes.
And also, when we remove that, we will be planting grass in that location?
Correct.
Okay, and also, there is currently a curb cut there for that driveway, that curb cut will be eliminated?
Right, so currently, with the number of bedrooms we have, we have a requirement for three and a half parking stalls per the ordinance, with the addition of the bedrooms, you would be up to a total of five. If you consider that we have one stall on the property now, the removal, which if we continue the striping, will allow for one additional street vehicle, so really, it's net wash in terms of what that does for us, but then the addition of the two-car parking area here has a loss of one street parking space, but an addition of a second one on site, so what we've netted out here is one additional parking stall for this property that currently exists, and with really an increase of at least a one-stall requirement, we've essentially balanced out the change in the parking demand with this driveway modification.
Okay, can you briefly review with the board the existing, there are certain existing variances, is that correct?
Yes, we have a lot of existing non-conforming situations, again, as I think you would find on virtually any lot within this block or any of the surrounding ones. The zone requires an eight-thousand-square-foot lot, we have fifty-eight-hundred square feet, so we have an existing condition there. We have a forty-three-foot lot depth where a hundred feet is required, we have a current twenty-seven-point-three percent building coverage where twenty percent is allowed, and our FAR is currently at zero-point-five-five-to-one, where zero-point-three-five-to-one is required. So those are the, and actually, too, we also have a, we have a rear yard setback variance of two-point-nine feet, where forty feet is required, and we also have a front yard setback of five-point-seven feet where, I believe, ten feet is required. So a lot of these are related to the existing structure, and, you know, we do have somewhat of a unique lot compared to some of the others with the trapezoidal shape. Some of these variances are exacerbated with the proposal, some don't really get any worse. For instance, the cantilever addition will be less than ten feet required, eight-point-seven feet, but not any closer than the current five-point-seven foot...
All right, slow down on that, just...
Sure.
All right, the cantilever variance, explain that to the board.
Sure, so the structure is basically coming off of the existing first-floor level straight out, and that will be an eight-point-seven-foot variance where ten feet is required.
Okay, and is the building even at that corner where we start the cantilever, is that a variance at the present time?
It's already deficient, yes.
It's already deficient, so we're not making it any worse?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, if you go to the eastern side of the property, we're also deficient, you know, on the other side, we have a nine-point-seven-foot setback, which is far less than the existing setback on that side as it is, so no exacerbation on that side either. Our building envelope is this extremely tiny triangle you see here, which not one single part of the house is contained in. So out of those variance conditions which already exist on the property, only a couple are really being modified in terms of bulk variances. We're going up to twenty-nine-point-five percent building coverage from the twenty-seven-point-three. In terms of the FAR, which I'll elaborate on a little later, we're going from zero-point-five-nine to one, from zero-point-five-five, really, those are the main deficiencies which are being exacerbated with the proposal.
Okay, and can you give to the board a planning justification for those two variances?
Sure, and, you know, we had looked at other cases granted by the board, you know, obviously, as we heard in the last case, every application stands on its own merit, but I do think it was, you know, interesting to look at some of the surrounding properties. Our, our conditions that are on our lot are, in a lot of cases, better than a lot of the surrounding properties, again, we have one of the larger lots with a lot less lot coverage. We pulled up a prior resolution for, I believe, one-twenty-two Hamilton, where they had a an FAR of about one-point-seven by the time they were done making improvements to the third floor for more bedrooms, more occupants than we're currently proposing on our property, that is much more conforming. But basically, what this just showed us is that there's a lot of variance conditions in this block, in this general area, a lot due to the, you know, the existing nature of the homes predating a lot of these ordinances. In terms of the negative aspects, we really didn't see any detriment with this application. Again, as a cantilever addition, that basically amounts to fifty-seven square feet, you know, more coverage on a lot, relatively diminished, not anything that's going to be noticed. It doesn't extend any further back than the structure immediately to the east of us, which occupies a lot larger percentage of this property. Again, none of the setback variances are changing, and really, we're only asking for an increase in one tenant over what the city is currently allowed for the property. So, you know, what we're really looking at is, is can the property support, you know, the additions of what we're proposing, and we believe that it can. Our addition of a parking stall has created a net balance in that effect from any increase that would be seen from a additional tenant. And I think the real benefit to this application is you have a home that, you know, while certainly livable and in good shape, what's going to be done here is to modernize this structure, make it more adaptable to current standards of living, you know, the additional, you know, bedroom upstairs is certainly a bonus to the property, but it's really going to upgrade and improve the character of this residence and of local neighborhood.
Do you see any negative impacts with the grant of this variance, should the board so grant it?
No, I did not, this is not a used variance scenario, you know, again, this has permitted two-family residents, and nothing's going to happen on this property that, you know, doesn't already exist. We're primarily surrounded by student housing, you know, if you look at our property owners' list, I think you find that only two people on this list are actually having their mailing address the same as the, you know, the property in which it occupies. So we're surrounded by student housing of similar densities and sizes, and arguably, we're going to have one of the more updated, nicer units. And the value that that brings is, when you have a better property to begin with, you get better maintenance by your tenants, they're going to take better care of the property, and we think that's important to be a neighborhood.
Okay, does this application in any way promote any of the goals of the municipal and useful?
It does, and first of all, it does support the goals of a master plan to provide a variety of housing options in the community, but in terms of purposes of zoning, I found that four purposes were furthered. Purpose A, curving units will actually guide appropriate development, improve the general welfare. Purposes E and G are very similar, simply promoting appropriate populations and densities to contribute to the neighborhood, community, and environment. And purpose I, providing a desirable visual environment. I think the improvements that we're making in removing this substandard driveway which approaches on the neighbor's property, and, you know, installing a new parking area with, you know, bicycle storage that can be done inside, so people can feel safe leaving their bikes outside at night, and, you know, general improvements to the property that come along with the addition will be a benefit to the area.
Okay.
And again, these were all the same conclusions reached similarly on the other application I mentioned.
When this application was first filed, there was a report issued by Mr. Moody dated October sixteenth, two thousand seven, which had certain requests, for example... October sixteenth, two thousand and seven, which had certain requests, for example, updating or repairing the sidewalk where necessary, talking about site distances, site triangles. You've reviewed all of those comments?
Yes, and they've been incorporated primarily for revision to plans which were submitted.
Okay, and if they have not been incorporated, they will be, and we will comply with everything in his report.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Any member of the board have any questions?
That's my last witness.
If this is all that we have to public comment, anyone from the public wishing to come speak on this application, please come forward.
Steve, Mr. Leslie, please.
Steve Osterberg, S-T-E-R-G-R-B-N.
And do you still approve this matter?
Yes, I do. Just wanted to say to the board, kind of reiterate, the planner said, I'm going to maybe repeat, under one-forty-two Hamilton, it's an investment property for me. That's the struggle that I'm sure Pete deals with, you guys deal with, I deal with. The structures all predate the existing ordinances and requirements that we have in two thousand and seventeen. So I would ask the board to look favorably upon the applicant's improvements here, and with emphasis on their improvements. He's a... Pete's one of the good guys. He wants to put money into his properties. He wants to put his own sweat into the properties. He's improving the properties. He's asking for a little extra, because we're investors, you got to make the numbers work, and that's the problem I think a lot of people have, is how do you... or the previous applicant, too, how do you fit twenty-five feet of space to work with, but make it work in two thousand and seventeen without breaking some rules or bending some rules? So Pete's a guy trying to do the good thing, lives in town, and I think there's no detriment that I can see to my neighborhood, where I have my own home there, too, and it's just a plus for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward?
Steve James, their last name, please.
And do you still approve this matter?
Yes. So I like this application a lot for several reasons. I also own an investment property in the area. I like it, number one, because we have somebody that lives in town. We don't have an absentee landlord who lives somewhere in Florida and has some kind of management company that takes care of the place poorly. I know that Mr. Taverto also manages properties here and here, and the way he manages properties, he does them with the utmost respect, not only for the seller but for the tenants. The second reason is, we see a pattern with Mr. Taverto, is that he takes something that is dilapidated, improves it, and keeps it. A lot of people, they like to flip houses, make their money and go, but here, he's here to stay. He's not going anywhere. So I really admire that. I think the gentleman, Steve, stole my thunder a little bit. Steve is one of the good guys. Pete is one of the good guys. And I wholeheartedly support this application as a public investor, and I have no problem. So I hope you pass it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve, no one else from the public? I'm going to close the public portion of this session.
Mr. Chairman, we would like to recommend that the conditions points in terms of the city engineering report dated October sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, since all necessary amendments and crossact agreements are being approved by the board planning, the city engineering plan, and the site plan is on, amount to review included by city engineer. Section of site inspection asked for deposit for engineering spending fees, amount calculated assumed by Title sixteen, twenty-four, one-sixty. Paying all water sewer connection fees, some twelve, thirteen oh four, thirteen oh eight, issuance of road permit, the city engineer required. Points in terms of the city planning report dated December seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, pending the fees to the city of Brunswick that are related to development or use of the project, paying all outstanding taxes and water sewer fees, PR canal commission approval or waiver, field soil conservation district approval or waiver, some engineering site plan, if any changes required by the engineering memo or plan amendments offered at the hearing, some architectural plans that comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering remotes or plan amendments offered at the hearing. All utilities, no site improvements being made by the applicant for so extensive, all site utilities being constructed underground, all temporary corrections by the driveway, shall require city council approval, all construction sites shall be done on-site unless encroachment applied to the same public driveway, who will require city council. Streets should get cleaned, upset, and reprieved. The applicant should call the streets to be cleaned, directed to use of it, directed to public works, track and patch should be installed, all construction exits, including down streets, curb and sidewalks, headed for the direction of the city engineer. The applicant will be installing bicycle facilities, as well as the car parking, and here to be in a weather-protected area. That's it.
Everyone else go ahead? Doug Shin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Trey Pappar?
Yes.
Sue McGalaght?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good holiday. See you next year.
... Milwaukee, L.A., City D-V-A-T two-zero-one-seven dash one-seven. Site plan and variance application, construction of the next two buildings, you will get a two-fifty-one foot after clock, two-sixty, lot one, one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. C, V-A-T, three.
Does any member of the board have a copy of this application?
David Lonsky, Paul Shem, Shad, Lonsky, also one of the principals, he's relatively confident that owns this property. Just briefly, by way of background, we actually purchased the property from the state of the original owner back in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, it was owned by the case of Lockwood Wood Johnson, the poor, actually, not Swenson, or something, so I'm saying we purchased the property. It was a Victorian-style house that unfortunately was subject of a fire that occurred in July of two thousand and fifteen. That destroyed the entire property, and fortunately, we had about three hours to move our files where we could salvage from the property, hours before we got the red sticker on it. And as a result, we were... we had to demolish the structure at the ZR. I did find, and I know it wasn't part of this middle, so I mark it as A1, I have three extra copies, but this was actually the survey of the property, it was purchased by Tom Shem, who was our law partner at the Hamilton Hamilton. And so it shows what the configuration of the property was, the house was, it was under the person. At our office, we occupied the basement, the first floor, the second floor, and the third floor. We had about fifteen or sixteen employees in that building at any given time, plus whatever clients and other attorneys that came for closings or they came for acquisitions. What's shown on that A1, the concrete driveway, we actually expanded and have a little parking noise about that accommodated between four to five cars that were stacked. But that was the configuration of the property during the fire. Again, as a result of the fire, we've been complying with municipality, and of course, by the time we got all of the required utility turnoffs and demolition completed, it took us probably about eighty-nine months to get everything, including the water disconex onto Stratford.
Okay, does it... you turned up just a slight bit, not too much?
Sir?
Some of the...
That's right.
So we'll just go a lot.
Is that better?
Since we're talking about it, why don't we go ahead and mark it as A2?
Sure. I just wanted to give a brief background to the application, and just to let the board know, I do have Brent Pappy, my engineer, I have an architect, and we have a planner that will provide testimony to this. Unless there's questions about the background, I'm going to order him to make a presentation.
Ray, right hand, state your name, his career last name, please.
Yes, Brent Pappy, P-A-P-I.
And do you still approve this matter?
Yes, I do.
Brent, can you give the board the benefit of your educational background, if you can?
Yes, I'm a graduate of Rutgers College of Engineering, a bachelor's of science at civil, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, I'm also a certified municipal engineer, I've prepared reports with the board over recent months, and I'm an owner of a... Ask for acceptance.
Welcome, acceptance of the... Thank you so much. I'm going to be speaking to an exhibit here that has a color rendering version of sheet four of A, the site plan documents that were submitted. It's entitled "Site Layout, Signage, and Striking Plan," and it's dated last revised December fourth, two thousand and seventeen. This exhibit references the boundaries and topographic survey in existing conditions that were prepared by Control Layout Inc. for the project, which is on the block two-sixty, lot one. The site's located at the corner of Livingston Avenue and Stratford Place, within the C-three-A Community Office President of Professional Zoning District. It's bordered by an office building to the northwest and residential to the north. It's also showing this aerial image here, I don't know if you can see it from where you are, but there's an area that shows some of the surrounding buildings and surrounding uses. Across the street, there's other mixed residential and commercial buildings, if you're familiar with the area. The subject property has about seventy-five feet of frontage along Livingston Avenue and a hundred-and-twenty-five linear feet of frontage along Stratford Place, with a total area of nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet. The site's currently a vacant dirt lot, as Dave recently described. The house was... the building, as I said, the office building that was on the property, was destroyed by a fire in July of two thousand and fifteen. You can see on the aerial image where there's a big brown spot in the aerial map, that's where the building once was. The applicant's proposing, in this view, to reconstruct the existing building, do a three-story mixed-use building with similar uses. The new building's ground floor will house office spaces, and the second and third stories will accommodate three apartments on each floor. The total floor area is seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet. Just wanted to note that that's a modification from what was originally put on the zoning table and the plans that were submitted, and the architect will speak to that. The applicant is also proposing to reconstruct and widen the entrance drive and the parking lot, which he recently described. The parking lot will have a twenty-four-foot-wide aisle for a two-way flow of traffic. Existing driveway was about ten feet wide, it was located more to the north corner of the property. We're proposing a twenty-four-foot-wide driveway to accommodate a full width for two-way traffic. The parking lot will have ten parking spaces in total. Four of those parking spaces will be covered beneath the building overhang. And within those four spaces is a handicap parking space, and there's a strict area for van access, which will lead to, directly to the ADA access ramp, which is underneath the front porch. Just like to also note that there is some on-street parking as well. There's on-street parking existing along Stratford Place for about three vehicles, and on-street parking along Livingston Avenue, fronting for about two vehicles. The new building will be served by a public water and sewer at Stratford Place. The electric service is proposed to be buried from the nearest pole, which is this pole right here, to a proposed transformer pad, which is at the rear corner of the parking lot, and then run into the building. There's... where? There. Existing sidewalk is proposed to be replaced, where the utilities will be installed. So right about this spot here is where the utilities will be coming into Stratford, so there's a portion of the sidewalk that's going to be replaced and curved along Stratford Place. One existing shade tree that's located somewhere right about where I'm marking my pen here will be removed, has a twenty-four-inch diameter caliber. That equates to a replacement of about five trees of three-inch caliber. The applicant's proposing, in lieu of that, three shade trees, which are shown, these dark green circles here with the property limits, as well as ten arborvitae along the northerly property line to add screening. There's also existing fencing along the north and westerly line. It's a six-foot-high stockade fence that's proposed to remain, that's going to run right about where my pen here is. I'm showing this drawing, just going to flip over really quick. This is the existing conditions plan in sheet two... I'm sorry, sheet three. I highlighted those, the tree that's being moved, as well as the existing fence that's going to remain.
Mark that as A3, please.
The building will be, I said, will be served by city, which, okay, there's a proposed refuse area right here in the, I guess, westerly side of the property. There's a doorway at the side of the building, which is easy to access, the waste area. The waste area originally, before we met with the Tac group, was in this corner here, which happened to be a little bit closer to the residential. Moving it to this spot here brings it farther away from the residential, so it goes a better location altogether. That waste area was meant for, so we fenced with a four-foot-high vinyl fence, and it's meant for trash cans or recycling cans to be stored. The property will be, like I said before, served by city, public waste and recycling two days a week... I'm sorry, waste two days a week and recycling every two weeks, or every other two weeks. The property also is going to include a bicycle rack right at the front here, by the entrance to the handicap ramp right up the porch. There's a proposed receding sign within the front yard setback. It's within a sign setback, I should say, and that will be detailed, you don't have to type that as a detail for that in their plan. New LED light fixtures are proposed throughout the property, to meet the city ordinance for light levels. There's a... another sheet here, serves some lighting. Mark this as A4.
Actually, is that...
This is sheet seven of A, it's the lighting plan.
And you have made some changes to it, or highlights, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, mark it as A4, then.
This plan depicts the proposed light fixtures for the property. There's one pole-mounted fixture that'll be right here centered in the parking lot, facing toward the building. There's a light fixture underneath the proposed building overhang, another wall mount just right at the entrance, just to bring some light into the entrance way. There's some light fixtures on the columns of the building, more decorative-style fixtures that provide light up and down, not so much projecting outward, and some other landscape lights as well. They're all LED fixtures, and we've made an effort to avoid any spillage of lighting onto the neighboring property. We provided a stormwater management statement that was dated October eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, which stipulated that the site will be redeveloped similar to what had previously existed, which Dave had described to you and what was shown on that survey that he just provided. The natural grade of the site slopes... I'm going to flip to another sheet here. This is the grading plan. This is exhibit five of A. I'm sorry, sheet five of A, exhibit five. A five. The natural grade of the property slopes from a high point at the northwest corner, and the parking lot sheet flowed towards Stratford Place. The front of the building would sheet flow toward Livingston Avenue, that was the existing pattern. The proposed grading is reflecting the same drainage pattern. Again, we're widening the parking lot to accommodate the additional parking that we're looking to have on-site, but at the end of the day, we feel that we're proposing improvement... looking to have on-site, but at the end of the day, we feel that we're proposing improvements that reflect what was originally there, and we're trying to make the site more usable in that regard. At the new building, there'll be roof drains that will drain down to grade, this splash box. I want to just address one of the comments in the engineer's report. Along this westerly property line, the roof drains will drain to grade, but there's about a 1.5, 1.7% slope, so that that water can sheet flow down through the grass toward Livingston Avenue. That was the intent there. This plan also shows the path of the electric service, the proposed water service, which will be for fire and domestic, the proposed sanitary sewer of rain, and the proposed gas, which will connect to existing stuff in the sidewalk. Move over the variances and waivers that are requested. The applicant's requesting the following variances and waivers for front yard setback variance, where there's 15 feet required under NJSA 40:55D-7DC, and 10 feet is proposed to the front porch building overhang, as Dave had indicated in that survey that he provided, the existing...
Why don't you speak to that? That's the variance actually on Stratford, which is the second front yard.
I'll point to that here. This is the setback we're referring to, which is this 10 feet here. It's actually to the porch and the building overhang, which is a tower, if you will. The architect will show that a little better in his color rendering. But that setback is pretty much consistent almost with what the original building was at. If you look at that survey, the original building was at 10.63 feet off of Stratford, so we're trying to mimic what was the building line there. We also have a rear yard setback variance, where 45 foot is required and 42 feet are proposed. Again, that 42-foot setback is to the building overhang. This is shown in the beige color here. The max floor area ratio variance, where 0.8 is required under NJSA 40:55D-7DC, and we recalculated that based on the square footage area Dave testified previously to 0.839 proposed. We have an on-street parking waiver, where 17 spaces are required, five for the offices, and 12 for the residential, and 10 spaces are proposed. And we'd like to just put on the record that the applicant's now replacing the existing building with similar use, increasing the on-site parking from the five spaces that were previously existing with an additional five spaces to make a total of 10 on-site. And there are approximately four to five parking spaces on-street, fronting the buildings into the corner lot. And there's some public transportation nearby. I think they just recently put a bus stop at the front of the property. We asked for a waiver for traffic impact statement for the same reasons that I just stated, and that's it for the variances and waivers. I can go through Dave, the engineer's report. Since the TAC meeting, we've submitted plans, which are these plans we're referring to. We addressed many, if not all, of the comments, and some of them I just testified to, but I'll go through them. We will comply with the, we've addressed 2.2. Let me start over here, I'm going to skip. One was an overview. 2.2 pedestrian and vehicle movement, we've addressed 2.2. Requesting a waiver for 2.4 traffic impact statement. 2.5 we'll comply. We moved the stop sign up. Brent, do you want to go through the law?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if Brent Pappy has my latest report. I did a second review after our first review of November 15, 2017. Brent Pappy, as you testified, issued revised plan by December 4th, and I did a second review to reflect that.
I do have that, yeah. I'm reading through them, even though you struck them out. I don't know if you want me to go through the law.
If it's struck out, that means that you've done it.
Okay, so then, at the end of the day, I think we're pretty much addressed, other than the utility reports that you're asking for, which we will provide.
As we've already characterized the portable water and sanitary sewer.
We will read of the sanitary sewer inspection as well.
Is there anything on there that you can comply with?
No, we'll comply with everything on your report.
That's all I have for the engineer. I don't know if you want to take questions before...
Thank you.
Want this one? Can you read your name and state your last name, please?
Rosario Manino, M.A.N.N.I.N.O. Yes.
Manino, can you give the board the benefit of your education and qualifications?
Sure. So I graduated from Florida Atlantic University in 2007, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Licensed for three years.
And have you testified before?
No, not for this board, I presented for one of other boards.
In the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Floor's yours.
So we have new rendering that you guys do not have.
A5?
I'm sorry, A6. Would you like me to pass it around, or do you want to raise it? So as David Brent had already mentioned, on the first floor, we have an office space. It's roughly 1,800 square feet. On the second and third floors are residential. On the second floor and the third floor, we have one, one-bedroom on each, and then two, two-bedrooms on the second and third floor. The two bedrooms are two-bed, two-bath. The bedrooms are one-bedroom, one-bathroom. The one-bedrooms are approximately 800 square feet, and the two bedrooms are roughly 1,000 square feet. The style of home is a craftsman style home, which we think is appropriate on this area and this street. The siding material is a hardy siding with some thin brick veneer on the lower level. What earlier, roughly the front yard variance over here, the variance action on the ground floor is on the ADA accessible ramp. So, and then up above, the only portion that's going beyond the setback is the tower element, which is roughly 14. Yeah?
Any other word, Brent? Okay, Allison, are you sure?
Can you read your name and state your last name, please?
Allison Coffin, C O F S I N.
And who's... Chairman Coffin's been before this board on a number of occasions, just turned it up the last time.
Still licensed, still certified.
Thank you. Floor's yours. You can present your plan before.
What we have here is a site that's located on the corner of Livingston Avenue and Stratford Place. I'm going to pull up the engineering plan to refer to. This was A2. The site was previously developed with an office building. It's now vacant. The applicant proposes to construct a three-story mixed-use building that's got office on the ground floor and six apartments on the second and third floor. There's 10 on-street parking spaces proposed, as well as landscaping and lighting assigned. The site's located in the C-3A Community Office Professional District, and this mixed-use building is permitted. But we're here tonight in front of the zoning board because D variance relief is required for the proposed FAR. The FAR that's permitted is 0.8. The FAR that's permitted, proposed is 0.839, so a little bit over, and that requires a D variance. And there's bulk variance relief required for the front yard setback to the covered porch and that tower feature from Stratford. Rear yard setback, where 45 feet is required and 42 feet is proposed, and that is just at the rear of the building to this little bit of building overhang that bumps out over the parking lot, so it's not the full rear of the building, just that little bit of architectural feature. And for parking, where 17 spaces are required, and there's 10 on-street proposed. I think there's also a relief required for parking setback and buffering. We've got zero, a little bit less than, a little more than zero feet on this side to the parking lot, and five feet of buffering in the rear where 10 is required. Foundation plantings are required around the full perimeter of the building, and there's a small area here along the side of the building where the fence is also screening it, no foundation plantings are proposed, and buffering around the refuse area where 10 feet is required and zero feet is proposed. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variance, and that the variances can be granted due to the fact that the site can accommodate the proposed FAR. The special reasons that we would look at for an FAR variance, the floor area ratio is a planning tool that's commonly employed for limiting the intensity of the use of the property, similar to density or bulk building size. In the Randolph Town Center versus the County of Randolph case, the court outlined the types of proofs that a board should consider when granting an FAR variance. What the court determined was that for FAR, though it's a D variance, it's distinct from a D variance for a use that's not permitted. It's more like a conditional use variance, in that it's inappropriate to apply the same standard for special reasons for an FAR variance as you would look at for a variance for a use that's not permitted in the zone. More appropriately, the standard that we look at is whether or not the site can accommodate the use despite the deviation that's being requested for the FAR. In this instance, the property can accommodate the proposed FAR in the same manner as it would accommodate a conforming FAR. The magnitude of the proposed FAR variance in this case is de minimis. We have a proposed FAR of 0.839 or 0.8 is proposed, and this FAR that's proposed does not significantly increase the overall intensity and use of the site. That small amount of additional floor area that's proposed, about 365 square feet, it allows for a little more living space for each of the proposed apartments. It comes out to about 60 square feet into those units. It doesn't create additional bedrooms, doesn't create additional parking demand, it just makes those units a little bit more comfortable to live in. As it doesn't create additional bedrooms or office space, it does not increase the intensity of the use of the site. So as the proposed FAR in this case can be accommodated on the site at the same sort of intensity of use as a conforming FAR would be, there is no impact on the ability of the site to accommodate the use that results from the proposed FAR. The variances that are requested can also be granted without detriment. That front yard setback, you know, 10 feet from Stratford, 15 is required, but this is limited to the open covered porch on the front, as well as the tower feature that is on the second and third floor. These features serve to provide architectural interest to the front of the building. They give it a more residential appearance than a flat wall at 15 feet would provide. And as such, I think that that promotes the visual character of the area, consistent with the master plan goal of having the buildings along Livingston Avenue within this zone maintain a residential character despite having mixed uses. There's a rear yard setback with a 42 feet or 45 feet is required. The magnitude of this variance is de minimis, in that it's required only for that small portion with a rear facade which overhangs the parking lot, and in this case, it also promotes the visual character of the area by providing architectural interest at the rear of the building. Parking spaces, we've got 10 off-site and an additional five in front of the property on the street. So we have 17 that's required, but there is a total of 15 available, not only on-site but in the immediate area. It's my opinion that that can be granted without detriment. It is a residential and office mixed-use building, so there is some degree to which those uses will be complementary in their use of the parking lot. I know that in New Brunswick, that can be a little bit different depending on whether or not you have students occupying the building. But in general, an office use on the ground floor will have its peak use of the parking lot during business hours for an office, which is during the week, during the day, and the apartments will have a greater impact on that parking lot during the evening and the weekend. So there is some ability for the uses to share those 10 parking spaces effectively. The next variance relief that we're requesting is for a loading space. There's none proposed, and there's one required technically in your ordinance. The size of this office is limited. The need for a full loading space that's dedicated on this site is not anticipated for an office use of this size. The dedicated loading space on this small lot would be an inefficient use of the limited space available that is better serving the lot by having parking spaces in that area. So I think that variance can be granted without any detriment. The foundation planting variance, in this case, given that there's fencing that provides the screening for the foundation in that area, will have no detriment to the visual character of the area. And the last variance relief that we're looking at is that refuse area buffer, where we have zero feet of buffering around the refuse area, but given that it's tucked, it's got a fence on one side, the parking lot screening it on the other side, and the stairwell of the building completely screening it from the street, I don't think that buffering in this case in the form of landscape planting would have any benefit to the public. It's already not going to be visible. There's no substantial detriment to the granting of the variances in terms of its impact on the surrounding area or its impact with the master plan and zoning ordinance. There's no negative impact to the surrounding properties. The mixed use is permitted, and the FAR variance being requested is de minimis. Now, the master plan locates the site in the community commercial office district, and the purpose of this district is to provide for the expansion and preserve the integrity of community-oriented professional office and mixed-density residential uses. This district shall serve as a transition between large-scale office development and residential uses. The proposed development is consistent with this designation, so despite the variance relief requested, it would not substantially impair the larger purpose of your master plan.
If I may, I just wanted to ask the architect to come back up just to highlight the elevations that were provided in the package, so that you could see that there's some benefit to the architectural features in the building.
Okay, so as I said earlier, it's a craftsman style home, which is familiar in the area. It's actually a beautiful craftsman home directly across the street from Stratford. What makes it a craftsman is the tall brick piers, squat columns, and the shingles spraggy placed here, especially up in the gables here, where we also have some brackets in each of the gables. And to break up the facade, like I said, most importantly in the rear facade, where we have slight variance here, three feet, is breaking up this elevation, you know, this sort of the straight wall here. So to break this up and create more of an architectural feature with this gable, we just pop this up to just break out that elevation slightly here. And it is also a corner lot, so to highlight and accentuate the corner, celebrate the corner, that's the purpose. So this tower element on Livingston and Stratford here. We have low-slope roofs on the, covering the ADA accessible ramp. Nice feature just breaks up the three-story a little bit. And the main entrance to the office is on the front elevation, elevation one, and the elevation for the residential is on elevation two on the right side, which is Stratford.
That's all I...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Nothing further from the applicant?
At this point, I've opened up the public table. If there are questions, please come forward.
Betsy Garlatti, G A R L A T T I. I do. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to thank you all for your great service to this zoning board. It's 9:30, almost 10 o'clock at night, and I appreciate that you're all tired and out of the home, so do I. I extend to speak my concerns on behalf of this resident neighborhood. I live basically four doors away from this property, as the crow flies probably only, you know, 100 feet. And while it's being described as formerly being an office building with an office building next door, both of those buildings were actually residential homes where Reverend Booker lived in the one that remains, and the case house was obviously also occupied by families. I know this... I know this because I've lived in this neighborhood. And I appreciate, as a taxpayer in New Brunswick, redevelopment is my mantra, and property has to have something on it. But I'm really concerned about the density of the residential component of this property. It, as testified by the applicant, it was fully occupied by his law practice and other ancillary services. There were no residents there. In the time, even since the fire, the, uh, the parking problems in our neighborhood have been exacerbated by the number of residents that do drive cars and do not have driveways or sufficient driveway space to put them in. While in theory there are street parking spaces available, I think even if you went by right now, you would find that they were occupied, and there is nothing on that property right now. The, um, the businesses along Livingston Avenue are very popular and active, which is great. And so there's a great deal of pressure on parking in that area, even though it's primarily residential, as noted. So I would just ask for you to consider that seven parking space deficit is more detrimental than it would appear, given our current conditions. I would also ask if we could have additional information about the signage, just to understand how it's going to fit in with the other signs along Livingston Avenue. And I would ask you to seriously consider the impact on our neighborhood as you evaluate this application. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to speak if I could, please.
Can you read your hand, state names by their last name, please?
Sure. Lou Garlatti, G A R L A T T I. Is out of town.
And your? For a vote treatment, please?
I do. Thank you. Just a couple of comments, again to echo Betsy's comments, and also just to focus on the engineer's comments as to the number and nature of the variance. As many of those would go away if the mass and density of this project was reduced. And what I mean is, there was a residential beautiful home that burned, unfortunately. The proposal to replace it is twenty-eight hundred square feet on the second floor and third floor. The mass of that looking out the third floor, what was there as a third floor, where a couple of doors and a beautiful roof line and some beautiful chimneys. I'm not expecting, it's obviously a profit developer. I want to see redevelopment. I'm a redeveloper, but it's not appropriate in our neighborhood. It's, I've lived there with Betsy thirty-plus years. I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't think the intent of the zoning in town is to create these massive structures that don't fit in with the nature of the neighborhood. By reducing the mass of this, each of those apartments, one, it sounds like there's three apartments on each floor. Single apartments go away, the rear setback probably, variance goes away. The D variance goes away because now they don't exceed the FAR. So a lot of good comes of reducing the size and footprint of this. I appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Just your name, Matt. Charles Kratzel, K R A T O P I L. Yes, I do. The board want to echo everything that Lou Garlatti has just told you. I think that they're looking out for their neighborhood, and they made a lot of good points. And I think you should, you know, think twice before approving this. There could be perhaps a better plan that comes forward. Obviously, something needs to go there, but it doesn't have to be this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Same amount as my first, the parking portion of the, you think? You have?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could just address a couple of quick points. The, the, of course, the use that's being proposed, the mixed use is permitted in the zone. It's what's actually part of what that zone is, which allows for office uses and residential uses together. Speaking of the parking situation, in this case, we're proposing a full ten spaces, which is far more than any use on Livingston Avenue other than, I think, the funeral grounds. As you go down, the county council office, lawyers offices, if they have a driveway where they stack two or three cars, sometimes four cars, that's about the extent of, of the parking that's, that's there now. I don't think there's any of those homes that, or any of those uses, those office uses that have, you know, any loading zones or anything else that, that's required. So we think that we are very much in promoting the intent, purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinances. We think that, that the proposal fits the character of the neighborhood in that it provides the office use on the ground floor. We believe that we've addressed a lot of the ADA considerations, having the covered access, having the ramps installed, which we're not there before. There was no ability in the prior building to recap access to the property. We think we're proposing a lot of benefits to the community and to the neighborhood at large, accommodating those concerns and providing housing that, that the city is looking for in this area. So I think that the plan was well thought out. We did spend a lot of time trying to make it appear like a neighborhood, which is why I had asked for some of the covered areas, covered porches, which was part of the original house, was also part of some of the neighboring houses on Livingston Avenue. We believe that having the appearance on the corner of that, that tower effect, again, adds some dimension. You know, a couple of the other corner properties in Livingston Avenue area had towers, and some of them were circular in fact. But they have that feature on the corner, which is part of what made that area in New Brunswick, you know, a desirable area for residences in the past and now for businesses. So we believe that we've addressed those concerns. And we'd also like to thank the board and thank the professionals for their pony courtesy this evening as we get to the holiday season. Thank you.
What, that design, you know, the question, what type of design is maybe provided, the areas provided?
Yeah. We have a concrete and stained teak and it's three foot six high, five foot six wide.
The, the plan that you referenced was showing that signage.
Yeah, she, A one. And we think this is a very nice sign. It's, you know, again, it's not very tall, but it's concrete, stained teak. It's a very nice.
Does it have any light at all?
I'm sorry?
Does it have any light in the sun?
Landscape light, yeah. We'll try to light it.
Mr. Chairman, we had asked for some additional details on landscaping and lighting and signage, and some architectural provisions. We just have some clarity. Are there states that are going to be provided? Or is the applicant not able to address those? There's some engineering and architectural and landscaping comments in the plan report that I, I'm not sure were addressed.
I feel we've been.
Yeah, we've added, we've added a light at the front of the building for landscaping. Is there on the plan that was recently submitted?
So since the original submission, we've added a whole series of light, lighting fixtures along the front of the building. We've actually shown lights not only underneath the porch, but there's also these lights that I was describing before. They have a throw that goes up and down, more or less, some more architectural-style lights along the columns. And they're showing these orange dots here and here to cover you. There's also these dots right here. There's four of them, three at the front and one on the side, which are landscape lights that'll shine up toward the building just to give it a better appearance at night. And we will have lights, ocular lights at the side while those are planned on.
While I have you here, we just also asked for some fencing on the rear property line, for the rear landscape buffer to beef up the transformer, to be screened, buffered.
I just wanted, I'll give, thank you. I, I just want to note, this plan I mentioned earlier, which was the existing conditions plan, sheet three, it's exhibit A three, shows in orange the existing stockade fence that's six foot high. It borders the property to the west and to the north. In addition to that, that fence, we will have, which is proposed to remain, ten armor fighting, along the residential side, which are going to be three-inch caliber mid, eight to ten-foot installed. So they should provide a real adequate screening to the nearby, the neighboring residential.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we also just asked for some clarity on the architectural plans. Just some minor revisions about windows. Sign details, I think, I've clarified. Who's under the plan report number comment ten J and ten K? Just so we can step up clarity. The board after is going to provide that with a grant to relieve from that. I could just read it out loud to you if you're.
Yeah.
Sure. So under ten J, third floor front facade, they actually provide full-size windows in the master bedrooms. I'm in the plan report of December twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then under ten K, on the front facade on the second and third floor, we actually remove the windows from the master bathroom shower spaces.
Including several guy plants, different water, water outlets.
Ten J, and I don't know, I have a report here.
When we went through the tactic meeting, there was confusion because there was a report that wasn't, wasn't for us, that was given to us. And I thought some of those comments were for the other report.
I would characterize these as extremely minor. We could work it out if the board actually were believing we forgot the window details.
Okay. Well, I understand what's in large in the bedroom windows.
Okay. He'll submit revised engineering and architectural plans from body, the comments and the engineering, um, planning memo.
Anyone with a word, any questions, comments?
Chairman, uh, just positive recommendation, um, as to following conditions. On the terms of the new engineering report dated December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, submission of all necessary easements and all access agreements for review or approval by the board attorney. The city engineer, upon the file, the same. And the site performance plan, allowed to be reviewed and approved by the city engineers. Submission of site inspection, as per the policy of engineering inspection. Fees allowed to be calculated, some of the files, sixteen, twenty-four, one sixty. Ten of all water and sewer connection fees, percent of thirteen oh four, thirteen oh eight. Issues overrode, opening permit from the city engineer if required. On the terms of, you know, consulting group reported December twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Planning to be westward, one of the offices, pay both the full billings, any other fees to the city, run circle, live, develop, and install the project. Paying all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. We'll also stand up plenty for the full bill waiver. The owner's announcement, full bill waiver, field soil conservation, district approval waiver, any other outside agency approval waiver that's necessary. Submit engineering site plan to comply with the changes required by the planning and engineering memo, engineering memo to plan them as offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning and engineering memo, so plan them as offered at the hearing. All the utilities and other site improvements, you can enable the output for sole expense, all on site utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary, towards the public driveway, should the party council approve of the start of the site, it shall be done on site, less than approachment for the same allowing, for the same allowing through the public driveways approved by city council. Future kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the director of public work, strike and curse. It will be installed on construction exits. Replace the damaged streets, curb and sidewall as per the direction of the city engineer.
Ed Mascona?
Yes.
Doug Sheen?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ivan Joyner?
Yes.
Teresa Paro?
Yes.
Sue McGalvey?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Anyone else?
If you want to get onto the board, just a quick announcement for everybody and everybody who's here, and everybody who might be watching. The buses in New Brunswick is an issue that often comes up here. I know you guys are all community leaders, so I wanted to, you know, I'm going to be making a presentation to the New Brunswick Traffic Commission on January fourth about the bus systems that exist here, ways we can maximize the usage of those and make easier for people to get around. So if you happen to be available during the day, it's a Thursday. The meeting is right here at one thirty P M, January fourth. Would welcome everybody, big time. Thank you.